We've got other people here.
Chad's already accused me of pulling the silver beach.
We are so glad to have you here. We have a lot of business on our agenda for this morning on the July 14th Scott County Physical Court meeting, and we'll officially call this meeting to order. And I would like to ask everyone to join me in the pledge of allegiance. Matt, for Pratt, would you lead us?
I would love to. With a pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Ms. Hamilton, would you do me the favor of calling the roll?
Mr. Hostetler.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Present.
Mr. Ellison.
Mr. Pratt.
Here.
Mr. Livingston.
Mr. Culbertson.
Here.
Judge Covington.
Present. The minutes from our previous meeting has been shared with you. Are there any questions related to those minutes as they were presented, and would there be a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Wallace. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Transfers? Any questions or comments related to those? Motion for Mr.?
I'm sorry, there aren't any.
There's not? I thought there was one.
No, I meant to mark that off.
Well, okay.
You're thinking of the next one, the handshake.
Yeah, well, my apologies. With that said, we'll go on down to bills and hand checks. As you can see there, road fund general, $300,000, jail fund general, $300,000. Questions or comments?
Motion.
Motion for Mr. Hostetler.
Second.
A second for Mr. Jones. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Let the record reflect that Mr. Dwayne Ellison completed his training unit. Number eight, clerk fees. Let the record reflect that county clerk Rebecca Johnson submitted $170,000, $178,9755 for clerk fees. Sheriff Tony Hampton submitted $38,45960. At this time, we're going to move Mr. Mike Carroll up into the next agenda item to discuss the bid for the sheriff's office clerk's annex building project. As promised, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, Judge.
This is very exciting. There's been a lot of work done. This has been a very thorough process, professional process, I feel like, and I'm going to let Mike share his feedback after opening the bids on Tuesday. We received two bids, and Mike's going to take it from there.
Okay, thank you, Judge. And just for the record, I do not have a tee time. I'm just, I'm just going to go watch people who actually know how to play golf.
Likely story, Mike.
So, as Judge Covington mentioned, we had two bids come in on Tuesday for the, for the project. If you recall, the last time that we were here, and when we approved this project to go out for bid, our final estimate on this project was $12.9 million. And during the time period that this project has been out for bid, at various times, I was concerned we wouldn't get anywhere near $12.9 million because of the construction market. But we got two bids, one from Devere Construction and one from Marilla Construction. Devere's bid was $10,836,000, and Marilla's bid was $12,030,000. So, we've got a $1.2 million differential between the two bids, but in reality, when you look at that from a percentage standpoint, that's only 10%, which really isn't that much of a difference, differential. But $1.2 million is a big differential. We took one alternate bid for the geothermal HVAC system in lieu of the boiler and chiller system that we had on the project, and Devere's construction price for that was $75,000, and Marilla's was $109,000. And all the other documents in both of their bids, which Judge Covington has, the bond, the list of prices, subcontractors at Denims, everything's in order on both bids, so there's, there's no reason to, there's no reason to consider that anymore. I do want to make one point that we looked at very quickly when we opened bids on Tuesday, is that the list of subcontractors between the two contractors was about 70% the same subcontractors. So, one of the things that we were concerned about initially was, does Devere have different subcontractors that are giving them better prices? But they're actually, again, in the mechanical, electrical plumbing field, they're all the same, they're all the same contractors, which is probably about 40% of the construction project. So, the first thing that we did is talk to Devere and ask them to verify their bid, that they were comfortable with the bid, they didn't have any qualms about it. Sometimes when somebody's a little bit lower than somebody else, they can come back and point out something they missed, or something they misinterpreted, or something, but we have it in writing that they are very comfortable with the bid, they've checked their documents, and they're, they're, they're ready to go to work. The, the feedback that they gave us was, they felt they were lower because they're finishing up three projects right now, and they're looking for work, and we know, we did not talk to Marilla, but we know that Marilla has a lot of work on their plate right now. So, that's probably the biggest factor in the differential between the bids. We talked to a lot of people that Devere worked with, because we have not worked with them before, and we got, we got good feedback from everybody that we talked to. They do a lot of work at Berea College, and I talked to all the folks down there at Berea College, and they said that they, they're happy to have them work, they're happy to have them be the low bidder on their projects, to go to work for them. So, at this point, if there's any questions anybody has, but I have no reason not to award the contract to Devere Construction.
Definitely grateful for two bids, appreciate Devere and Marilla bidding, and, you know, we met yesterday to go over this data before this court meeting, just to make sure we had, you know, our head on straight about all the facts. And Rick and Rob were able to sit in and listen. Would you all like to make any comment about what you all heard?
I think a couple, and kind of Mike just reminded me, we did only get two bids, but I, and I know I'm not the only one that did this, but I called some different general contractors that I know, and basically, they didn't bid it because they're, they have a heavy workload already. Several, I talked to two or three really large contractors who could have taken this, but they're, they're loaded up. And so, I was pleasantly surprised to see these two folks come in and compete, and I think it is a competitive bid. So, I personally, we have never worked with Devere, but I have called around folks, found folks that I know that have worked for them, and I got a good response out of those folks.
Okay.
This, this morning, Rick and I was talking, and Rick's in this field, and I'm just kind of deferring to him, but we felt like the geothermal, the $75,000 geothermal price was, was a fair price, and that we should go in that direction. So, when we approve that bid, that should include the $75,000 geothermal.
And I agree with you 100%. Whoever wants or considers making that motion, we need to have that included.
Absolutely, I totally agree, Chad. That, that's, that's a bargain price for geothermal.
I think so, too. One other comment, if Mike would, wouldn't mind to address it, there is a contingency money in there, and it's $250,000.
Sure.
Do you mind explaining that?
Sure. That, that number, that $10.836 million has a $250,000 contingency in it. So, at this point, the, the actual number for the construction would be, if I could do this in my head, $10,570,000. The $250,000 can only be, it's not for the contractor's contingency, it's your contingency. So, what, what it, what it gives you the ability to do, the reason we do this is, if some, if we need to get a change, and it can only be utilized by executing a change order. And the change order will come off, and, and the change order will be approved by this body, but it allows Judge Covington to move forward and say, yes, we've got the money already in hand, we can move forward. If we have an emergency problem, or something that needs to get done immediately, we don't have to wait for the fiscal court to meet to authorize moving, moving ahead. And so, you have $250,000 in there for anything that happens on the project cycle.
And you know me, if something comes up, I'm going to share the information, and if we had to do something quickly, you know, we would, we'd, we'll get it done. I also would like Mike to share, another saving, opportunity for savings is that on every major component, we, we have written into direct purchase, and that sales tax will come out of that.
Right.
And that, like, once you start adding up $10 million, or, you know, that's a significant dollar figure that we will save.
Correct.
Would you like to speak to that?
Correct. The, the, the sales tax is, again, included in this bid right now, and what we are looking to do is, when we buy, when, when Devere buys the mechanical system, though, all the equipment required, well, with geothermal, it's less than it would normally be, but anyway, but, but you say you're, say you're buying the masonry, buying the brick products, you know, that 6% sales tax will, the county will pay for that purchase directly, and that 6% sales tax is then taken out of the contract at that point in time. So, you're going to, you're going to end up saving a couple of thou, hundred thousand dollars off the DPO program as well. And, you know, we can't get every nickel and dime from every construction product, material that goes into the project, because you just can't do that. If a guy needs something, he has to get it right away, and some things aren't worth the paperwork it takes to get it done. But we have, we have been using this, this program for about 10 years, and we've been very successful with generating money to come back to the owner, to be used for, to be used for furnishings or computers.
FFA or whatever.
Yeah, other, other things on the project.
So, one last thing I'd like to mention, and then I'll ask for any other comments. I called Mayor Bruce Frayley of Berea, and asked if he had any comment, and he gave him a glowing recommendation, and recommended him without any reservations. They had done a EMS project for them, and then I also spoke with Judge Taylor from Madison County, and he personally knew, they had not done any projects for him, but personally knew the, Mr. Devere, and spoke very highly of them, and said they were well-respected business people. So, comments, questions for Mike?
I got a few.
Yes, sir.
So, everybody knows I've not been for this project from the get-go, but Bran Stare Carroll has done an excellent job on this project. It's a great design, it's going to look nice, I'm going to give out bullets, it doesn't matter, so. But I just want to give them props, and I think, I think the list of contractors they've got, I think they've got a great list of contractors, all the subs, we looked at those yesterday, it looks like they've got a great bunch, and this is going to turn out to be a great asset to the sheriff's department, knowing that that's coming along. A question I do have is, are we going to pay for this, or are we bonding?
Well, so, here's how the plan is. One other thing I'd like to mention is, you know, it's going to meet the needs of our sheriff's department, I mean, it's a real need now and into the future, for training, for, for just being able to do business for a variety of items. But not only is it meeting the needs of the sheriff's office, it's also meeting the needs for the county clerk, and vehicle, vehicle transactions, providing a second location for convenience and customer service for the community. But then the third, the third item is an election center. The reality is, voting centers are going to be here, that's not going to change. We, we will now have control over the schedule and the location of a voting center, and that allows us, you know, to serve the community better, in my opinion. So, we also have that additional square footage in the basement where the voting center will be, but, you know, that's for future, you know, we'll have that space for future growth. But, you know, this meets so many needs, and the $10,800,000, I mean, I am tickled to, you know, to death about this, and I think it, it's a good project. Now, back to your question, on August 3rd, and I don't know what that buzz is. On August 3rd, the bids for the EMS building will come in, and at that time, we'll have hard figures for both. And I spoke with Compass Municipal Advisors yesterday, Michael George. The plan is essentially, at the, you know, we, we can look at our, you know, our, our revenue balance at the end of, of June 2023, look at that number, then we'll look at the cost, the 10-8, and then the cost of EMS, and as a court, we will decide how much do we want to bond, and how much do we want to pay out of cash reserve. The beautiful thing about this is, we can use cash out of this year's budget, and we budgeted with that in mind, but this will run into next year, and we can finish out this project out of next year's budget as well, and we can supplement that with, with cash dollars out of that, with a plan. Michelle, would you like to comment on that? Do you agree with everything I just said? So, my goal is to, you know, I don't want to be house poor, my dad always said you don't want to be house poor, but also, I want to aggressively address this, that, you know, that, I want to aggressively debt this bond, and, and be able to try to, to reduce it as soon as physically possible. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Any other questions or comments? Would there be a motion?
Judge for approval. Of the, the Devere construction bid with the addition of the alternate geothermal HVAC included in, in that.
Now, see, a second from Rick Hostetler.
And that, yeah, that's an, actually, not an addition, it's actually in that 10-8.
I'm sorry, Rick.
Isn't that, isn't that 70?
$75,000 is not in the 10-8.
No, that's, that's an alternate bid.
Got you, okay, sorry.
Okay, so, you, you hold that second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Judge.
No, enjoy your, your morning.
Oh, it's going to be nice and toasty out there.
Hey, Judge, since, since we, we, this project started, and talks about this started before you were in, in your office, I think we, this is time for a celebration, and I think we need to have a groundbreaking, because we haven't done that in your tenure, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, we will do that.
And we need to have the sheriff's office there.
If y'all want to be out there at 1:30, I got to go.
The question is, are you buying lunch?
Now, no, 100% yes, and we'll do that, and, and, you know, it really meets the needs of our community. The other thing I didn't mention, and I do want people to know, like, we intentionally chose this site, A, for its strategic location for staff to be able to get out into the county easily, but the one A, just as important, is the location near schools. I mean, it is so strategically located to so many schools, and to provide that additional law enforcement nearby makes me feel so much better, and, and that's something that, that was intentionally done to help our community, and, and help people feel like they've got a little bit better measure of law enforcement.
Go ahead.
Is there, is there a projected start date, Judge?
I think they want to get started like.
Monday?
Like, I would not be shocked, within the next two weeks, they're, they're out there. I mean, I, that's what Mark, I mean, Mike said, that they, we'll call Mr. Devere and try to get a, a lock on it, but they, they shared they were wanting to get started.
Yeah, that's what Mike told us in that meeting yesterday, that they were ready, ready to go, what he said. I just kind of want to echo, because that was part of, early on in this process, and that was part of what got me on board even more, was that satellite for the county clerk's office. A lot of times, I'm down here in the afternoons, after work, after I get off and come see you, or whatever, and many times, that lobby's got eight, 10, 12, sometimes 15 or more people in it. Sometimes it's standing room only, especially when you get close to the end of the month, and people are renewing and all that stuff with their, with their car tags and stuff. So, that was one of the, one of the reasons way back, that, that I really was, kind of really got on board, is because that is, I believe, when, when that thing gets, gets built, and the community gets familiar with that being accessible, there's going to be parking, because that's the other thing, people are circling around trying to park, and, and then they come in, and they're waiting, and, and I, this is not a negative comment, I, I, I think our county clerk has got it set up in a pretty good fashion, they move people pretty quickly, it's just that there are a lot of people, and it's congested, and I, I think this will ease it up.
A thousand times yes, appreciate those comments.
Yep.
We're going to move on. EMS, striker EMS agreement ALS 360, we've shared the facts of this, we've had presentations. Any questions or comments, and would there be a motion to approve that agreement as presented? Motion for Mr. Rob Jones, second for Mr. Ryan Pratt. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That's going to move us down to EMS paramedic, medicine program, opioid settlement funds. Number one, Cam shared an email about appropriate uses. It's Cam's opinion that this program would meet the criteria as acceptable use. I, I think, you know, being able to, and Chris, help me, and Jeff, you might need, you know, he's going to do a new hire for this position if we approve it. And what we are proposing is that half of the money for this position be earmarked for this community paramedicine position, and that, the other comes just out of general funds. What did we talk about, you know, a $60,000? Jeff and Chris, can y'all help me with?
I just, I'll parse the numbers real quick, it's based upon, we're looking at just a paramedic position, right? Based upon what an entry level pay is, it'd be $55,200 just for the compensation, not including benefits, of course.
Yeah.
But you can probably, with that, you're probably looking at it being upwards of $80,000.
So, could we consider a contribution from the opioid settlement funds towards this position and approve the position up to $40,000? Is that, would that get us?
It would get you, it'd get you to the halfway point.
Yeah. Or should we, you know, my, and I'm assuming that, you know, I support this, and I'd like to hear from you all, I just wanted to get the, the facts out about how much money would be before we start talking. So, I think the motion you'd read is, is up to half of the cost for salary and benefits, up to, you know, if it's up to $40,000, I think that would do it. Comments and questions?
Yeah, so you're trying, and I apologize to you and the court, and to you, Chris, for not being in the workshop, but I have watched it numerous times last. but I have watched it numerous times last, the workshop from last Friday. And most, all of the audio was good, there were a few places. But I think what you're alluding to is, Chris was kinda estimating that 50% of his calls would be okay, according to Cam, would fit this opioid, this settlement money distribution. So, that's where you're coming up with the 40,000?
Yes, sir.
Kind of.
That was what I was ballparking.
Gotcha, okay.
So, in essence, what we would be doing is creating this additional position. And I always get concerned about creating these positions, because when the money runs out, we have this extra position. And I'm not saying that it's not needed, but that's gonna be, that could eventually fall back on the cost of the county, expenses for the county. So, the other part of that is, is that you believe it needs to be a paramedic in this position, correct?
Correct.
So, then that's gonna take a paramedic off of?
It'll be an outside, or an external hire. And we already have three candidates that have expressed interest.
Okay, so it would be an outside person?
Yeah, it wouldn't affect our staff at all.
And, you know, as I've shared, you know, we have one settlement kind of locked down about the monies that we're gonna have. But what's been shared with me is the second settlement will mirror the first settlement in funding. And, you know, I anticipate getting that information, you know, and hopefully in the next three, six months, you'd hope. But what we are proposing, or what I'm thinking in my head, is what we have already would be covered with, you know, these conversations that we're talking about, the community paramedic, the school social workers, and then the possible net recovery conversation. We'll have to get your all's feedback on that as well.
And Judge, if I could just add, in Fayette County, when they did this program, similar to the way we're setting it up, the way it evolved is that all three of the hospitals in Lexington now fund the program. So, I still have hopes that we'll be able to work out something with our hospital. You know, we initially talked about that, looked at that, we weren't able to get it done by this deadline, but I feel like in the future that there will be monies out there.
So, you would intend to go back to the hospital after having a year under your belt and saying, here's what's, here's the facts and here's the data?
Is this gonna be, would they be required to have their CP, like through IBSD prior to, like, do you have people already that have that?
Yeah, well, we don't have the class, the next class starts in September through Mobile Health Consultants from Ali Freshaw. And so, we have a position, a seat in that class reserved. K. Beans doesn't recognize community paramedic as an official certification at this point.
But you can get an advanced certification, CTC.
Yeah, so right now, you can just, I can just say, K. Beans, I'm Georgetown Scott County EMS Community Paramedic, and they say, okay. So, we can do that till the certification, and they're working on the draft now. They discussed that yesterday in the medical oversight committee, so those will be out by the first year. But it'll get us time to get our folks certified.
I have a same question.
So, do you know all those ABCs he just mentioned? I know my ABCs are, I think I do, and he's out of order.
There's something out there called, in the grand sense, like certification, where you have to go take a test, and then you can sign your name with those credentials, right? Like, I have my, I'm a certified emergency nurse, like, I'm Ryan Pratt, RMCN. So, like, you have to have all the CE hours, you have to test out, it basically shows that you're knowledgeable in that specific area. So, I would highly encourage that they have to have.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's our, that's our goal.
Question?
Right, and I'm glad you brought this up, Chris, because when I watched the video, I remember the first time you presented this, when I was here, you did talk about trying to partner with Georgetown Hospital. So, what happened with that?
Well, so.
Or do you know, or?
Let me answer, because I went and met with the president of the hospital, and his conversations with corporate was, you know, the additional funds for personnel was the issue. And, you know, he was still working about possibly having internal person fill a similar role, but I've not gotten any more feedback.
And to follow up on that, what Rick's saying, we have multiple, I guess, hospitals or medical groups in Georgetown. I think Lexington Clinic is here, we got Baptist Health, we got UK. Like, they're not, they're, we don't, their building's not here, and their hospital's not here. Can we partner with any of those groups as well?
I'm sure we can, Chad, once we get, I feel like we'll be in a much better bargaining position once we have the program established and say, this is what we can do for you, and we're already doing it, rather than to come and say, hey, if you give us some money, we're gonna try to get this up off the ground.
But, you know, we're proposing spending, you know, opioid settlement funds, but also general fund dollars. But the rest of this is the data from Lexington. The number of times this saves a run for a truck, you know, that's gonna reduce, and then keeping these individuals out of emergency rooms. And then trying to get them hooked up with our partners at the police department, with the social worker and such. You know, all those things fit together and make sense to try to impact our community in a positive way and use these funds the way they were intended. So, I'm optimistic about it. Any other questions or comments?
That was gonna be my comment, too. Hopefully, this will start the end of this opioid epidemic, and we gotta try some.
No, I agree.
I will say, though, that I think the OMS is gonna be on us paying, because CMS just cut out EP3, which is a version of this. Basically, if you go to somebody's house and you, like, hey, you need urgent treatment, you don't need a PR, CMS Medicaid was paying for that, but they've cut that out, like, December 31st, they're stopping that. So, things like, like, you know, this program, we're basically gonna have to fund. I don't think there's gonna be any CMS money coming in for programs like this. They're not allowed to utilize them.
The other question, Chris, that I had about this position, is I'm sure these, what's the hours gonna be, normal?
It'll be, so it will start off, yes, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30.
So, what happens if I'm a frequent flyer and I call at 7 o'clock every night?
So, we would respond just as we do now, and then document that and pass that along. So, the next morning, when the community paramedic comes in, they go out and make a visit, talk with them, and try to get them the resources they need.
Yeah, but you understand what I'm saying, is sometimes they're gonna call outside of these.
Oh, yeah, and this will be an on-call position, for sure. And I, you know, foresee that the schedule would have to be flexible. So, we'll start out 8:30 to 4:30, but it may end up being 11 to 8, you know, whatever, or high.
How are you figured that out?
Whatever best serves the community, so.
Any other questions, or would there be a motion?
Well, one other question or point, maybe. So, we know there's some available funds now, and it's looking like there's gonna be same kind of chunk of money coming in the near future, and maybe even more after that. There's all kinds of lawsuits, I think, that are still out there pending. But at some point, it's gonna be all on us at some point, and I think that's what Chad was alluding to earlier. But with that said, we'll have a program in place, and we'll know whether it's working for us or not. So, I think it's a, I think it's a no-brainer to try to give this a shot.
The Medical Oversight Committee of K. Beans yesterday, and they did approve this project. So, they voted on ours.
Great.
So, we did get approved from the state to go forward.
Motion.
Motion from, second, motion from Mr. Rick Hosteller, second from Mr. Jones. Any other questions or comments?
That's toward a 40,000.
Yes, sir. Up to 40,000 towards the community paramedic, and also creating the position. So, and the remainder will be from the general fund. So, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
We'll now move down to school social workers proposal. We've heard conversation, I shared, you know, feedback I'd had from the coalition, talked to, you know, our superintendent, Billy Parker, and he is supportive of this proposal to allocate funds and have them then hire school social workers that would work with students that have family members that are in active addiction, or with students that are involved with addiction themselves, also doing programming and educational work with students in general. So, questions or comments about that?
All right, so let's walk through that. You said they are hiring, so you're just telling me the school system will?
Yeah, we wouldn't hire them, we would allocate the funds. And my proposal is up to $60,000 for two positions, so 60-60, it's $120,000. And I would propose that we guarantee them two years. And that way, we're not, we're not.
Are they gonna be contract employees, or they'll work through Scott County Schools?
All we're doing is putting the tool in the toolbox at the school system. They will, they will agree to use those funds to hire two licensed social workers that work with secondary students.
Only secondary?
I mean, you start, secondary's middle, too.
Well, yeah, I know.
But I think you start trying to ask them to work through K through 12. You're gonna spread them like peanut butter, and it will just, I think the secondary students, middle and high, and of course, you know, if there's an elementary student that's, I mean, we wouldn't say no, but I'm just saying the focus.
Will they work with the counselors?
They'll work with counselors, counselors will refer them. Like, counselors will help connect them with students, and teachers will as well.
But aren't there groups already set up to do this?
Chad, not that, I mean, I think they have one at the school system, is what Billy shared with me.
I gotta think of the name of the group that, that work with students to particularly deal with these, that have these issues. But a lot of times, it's a live array of different deals.
I've met, and Chris has been at those meetings, Cam has been at those meetings. I would, you know, invite, if y'all wanna make a comment about what you've heard at those meetings, like, those meetings have been to, A, talk about recovery-ready communities, and then also talk about, you know, how could we spend these monies and have a strategy? And then really, a community effort, you know, to address this opioid issue. But the feedback that we've gotten, and when Boyle County's representatives came, they were specific about using funds to address needs for younger people.
In my mind, I'm thinking, I just wanna make sure that we're not duplicating services, for one, and that this is the best expenditure of the opioid settlement money, and to make sure that we're not, we could be spending it on other things. I don't know what those other things are, you mentioned the net recovery group.
Well, that's what we're gonna talk about next.
Yeah, but make sure that's the best plan moving forward for our community.
How much money?
I'm proposing that we allocate funds for two positions, and those funds would be up to $60,000 each, a total of 120.
So, it's a 240,000, it's a 240,000 commitment.
I would propose that we tell them that we'll fund it for at least two years. If you don't wanna do that, you don't have to do that, you know, but I just think that continuity is important. Relationships are important. If you wanna just do one year, that's not, I mean, that's not a problem.
How is this position different than, like, the Catholic school counselors?
The school counselors are funded through, through just their school general fund. They have so many counselors per student. I can tell you myself that those individuals see like 700 kids apiece. They don't have time to wipe their nose. And the kid that is in crisis, that has the most issues, needs a positive adult relationship. And the reality is, is that, you know, they need more staff. And the kids that are in crisis, in issues like this, they need even more time. And, you know, when I was principal at Scott County High School, I mean, it was just a yearly issue of trying to get more staff on counselors, on the counselor level. But it's just, you know, they have a staffing formula, and they have staffing, you know, funding issues, and it is a yearly battle. All we are doing is using funds from the opioid settlement funds to try to help put a tool in those schoolhouse walls.
Yeah, but didn't that, the state legislature, this is after your tenure as principal, did they not mandate that there had to be, there had a mental health person that's now for all the schools as well?
I'm not aware of that.
I think so.
I never had a mental health counselor added to my.
But like I said, after your tenure is.
Maybe so.
The way that was mandated.
Several of the counselors are social workers.
I mean, they're all, all the counselors are certified, they all have a master's in counseling. And, you know, they're very qualified, they have great staffs at those schools, but they're just spread thin because of the number of kids. Chris?
Judge, I just wanted to talk about the meeting, the last meeting we were at when Boyle County had their ASAT folks there, and I don't remember those ladies' names. But if I'm not mistaken, their number one suggestion for use of the opioid settlements was social workers in the schools, to set up, not only to be there for those kids and their families, but to set up a peer-to-peer network, because they said that was the most impactful, they felt like, from their experience, is to get other kids that have been through similar circumstances in front of these kids, because kids kinda tune out the adults and don't always wanna hear. So, that's how they had utilized their funds to get the social workers in the schools. I don't have a lot of in-depth knowledge about that, it's a little out of my wheelhouse, but I.
And that was something I would suggest of Superintendent Parker. But I have faith that leadership at the school board would help hire individuals that would be able to connect with this unique kind of situation. This job's not for everybody. It would be people that have, you know, a unique skill set, and it would, setting up that peer network also would be a positive. Yes, sir.
So, 60K per person, well, it sounds like we do, I was gonna ask, do we need two people? But I'm thinking, if we're gonna do this, we probably do. We've got two high schools, how many middle schools?
Three.
Three, so.
You got ECS, too.
Yep, well, you should count that as four, right? But it's all, they're all the same students, though, coming from the middle and high school. Right, high schools. But my question is, is that 60K, is that what a salary would be? Will the school system put anything in on that, or?
I think they might have to supplement it a little bit. But he sent me some dollar figures, and that was a good number that would cover salary and benefits for the most part.
So, the money that we have already, how much are we adding that?
So, we have $292,000 sitting in the bank right now. You know, we've committed 40, this would be 120, so that would get us, you know, up to 160. That's, you know, and then, next year, we'll get another allocation. I believe it's another 67,000, but, you know, I am anticipating that second settlement will be a big, you know, another 292,000, 300,000 range upfront. And if you all feel more comfortable just allocating for one year, then I respect that. But that's, does that answer your question?
Yes, well, to me, the money doesn't matter as far as a kid is concerned, because this could change the kid's life and his projected way he's gonna be an adult. I just, it's a great thing to do.
When I was principal, we tried to start a mentorship program for kids that struggle in any way. The number one piece of data that impacts a young person's life is having a positive, professionally trained person in their life that's there. And that, what you're talking about is, hits the hammer, hits the nail on the head. That positive impact, the relationship, somebody constantly checking in on them and trying to encourage them, and then trying to connect them with services. I'm done talking. Is there any one other question?
So, if we do this, if the court decides, and if we just did it for one year, that's kinda like what we were talking about with Chief Runyon a minute ago. kind of like what we were talking about with Chief Runyon a minute ago. Over time, he's gonna, he's gonna have some documentation, whether it's working or not.
I'll ask Billy to give us.
Well, we'll, we'll get that, I'm sure. We could get that. And then, you know, I mean, if that would.
No, I'd ask that social workers to come and give us a little presentation.
Absolutely.
Next spring sometime, late.
So that if, if things are, if it's a benefit and we can see that, we can keep it congruent, have enough time to say, hey, we're, we're committing for another year. So I'll make a motion.
We have a motion.
For one year?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for two.
120, 60,000 for two positions, total 120.
Rick has made one for one, but I, I, I think the two years, a good commitment to somebody to, to come in and be in our area.
Comments?
I would think for one year, just because we're not positive of the settlement money coming in. And if it doesn't come in next year and we're committed to third or organizations, it's, we're going to be out quite a bit of money.
Unless Rick wants to rescind his motion.
No, I'm just going to leave it out there. If he gets a second, he gets one, if he don't, he don't.
Based on, I'd, I'd second Rick's motion, just because I'm afraid if the settlement doesn't come through next year, we'd be committed on two or three different projects.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. Now, net recovery proposal. You know, we have heard presentations from these individuals for many years. You know, they've shared data. Last week when they met, I think what they shared, 550 Kentucky participants and 80% was the number that was shared that.
As a success rate. Well, that's, that's what I heard. Some of that audio from their presentation, because they were on, on Zoom, was not the best, but that's what I recall hearing.
You know, and there's a lot of moving pieces to this. You know, their hope is to get 500 people in this program through the, through the next year, through different counties. Their specific request to us was 66,000 the first year, 22,000, 22,000 the next two years. And their proposal is 34 spots, you know, for treatment. And, and I think they said they're going to spend $10,000 per person. On the, my understanding from my notes and recollection from the discussion, the FDA data will come back on August the 9th and that will be released.
I couldn't, I thought they said, and I thought they said something like, within the next 30 days, they're, that part was a little bit.
They can break the blind, is what they called it.
Yeah, in 30 days, that is what they said.
Is that what you recall? They could break the blind. My notes show they could break the blind on August 9th.
I didn't hear that part. It was not all audible.
And, and that will give us, we could ask for more information then.
Well, I think he did mention, at, when he was talking about that, what I did hear is he said, when we can share it, we will.
Yeah.
But I, they can't share anything now. I don't even know if they know it, yet.
I would be more waiting to see how their study comes back. I mean, we're just, we did 120,000 for two school counties for all, you know, a lot of kids, I don't know how many kids are in secondary education, I'm just going to make a number up for a thousand kids or so. I mean, we're talking 100, 104,000 for 34 people. And we don't know, really, you know, we don't have a lot of data on it. So I would like to see us get more data before we spend 104,000 on 34.
So, so I appreciate that comment and that's something that's kind of on my mind as well. I want to share a couple of things. One thing that Rick and I talked about earlier this morning is, you know, they've asked for 66,000 first year and then, you know, could we pose to them, offering them 33,000 and then ask them for specific feedback and data in six months? And then if we see data that reflects a positive impact on community members in Scott County, then we could entertain fulfilling their entire request. We could sit and wait till August 9th and get that, when they break the blind and get all that information, that's another option. But, you know, Rick, I'm going to let you talk, because this has been a, this has been something that you've been involved in for a while and that you've done a lot of research and, and, and if you'd like to have the floor to, to share with your colleagues some comments, that would be welcomed.
Thanks, Judge. So, and we did talk about maybe seeing if they would take the 33,000, which is half, for, which would be 11 and 11 for the next two years. After that, 11,000, 11,000.
Well, I would thank, and not to interrupt you, but if, if in six months, if we gave them 33,000 after August 9th and we said, come back in six months and tell me how many people you've treated, and then if you want to come back in three months and say, hey, this is what's happened, can we revisit this funding?
Here's the other thing, and I don't know this answer, and I wasn't here to ask the question, that's my fault, but I, I didn't hear them talk about that in the workshop, but previously, we've had them speak and some, some of the guys got to go to Louisville when they made a presentation to the whole group. They said on there, let me just throw a few things, put it together. They said in one of the presentations, I don't remember if it's Louisville or when they presented the first time here on Zoom, when Joe did, about they would kind of put the money in an escrow account, because they did say at the workshop that they were looking to try to get 12 counties on board. And I, I didn't write them down, but I think they listed three to six counties that they have, that they are already actively working with. I couldn't hear all of that, so I'm not exactly sure if they said they got three counties.
I think they had commitments from two.
I, I couldn't get all that.
And they had two other pending.
But you asked a question and out of that question, I don't remember what it was, but he said, well, we, we, we would like to get 12 counties on board. So, back that up. When they, when they talked about that a few months ago, before the state, when they were trying to go for the state grant as well, which they didn't get, I'll talk about that in a second, but they had said it would go into like an escrow account. They weren't going to do anything until they could gather up. And what I'm gathering now is they, if they could get 12 counties on board, then they would start. In other words, what I'm saying is, I don't think, which we'd have to confirm this if we decided to do it. I don't think they're just going to take the money and go spend it. I think it's going to need to be set up and let them get their lump sum before they do anything.
I would have to call and ask.
Sure, sure. I mean, if we voted to do it, it'd have to be contingent on that. But I, I believe that's how they explained it when they were going for the state grant and they were also at the same time going for county partnership. I'm pretty sure that's how they explained it. In fact, I, I couldn't find it, but I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure that was in an old email from them. And then, and then the other thing, they did not get, and I know you've asked it and I think you might have even asked it at the workshop, I can't remember if it was then or another time, about what happened with the, the state grant, because they, they were hoping to get that. Well, what I saw in the presentation, when they did it on the news, was I think it's 40-some billion, million, not billion, 40 million plus, that they're, but it's going towards another drug. And the thing that the net device does, it'll even take them off of Suboxone and everything else. All of those, it takes them off of it. That's what they claim. I've met guys that have had this device. They don't, they're, one guy in particular, it's 10 or 12 years. He's a professor at Campbellsville College, from my understanding now. He's on staff there. Anyhow, if, we, we can wait if we want to, but I don't suggest that. I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion in a second, but because, just what? In, in a minute. No, yeah. Well, I will if I have to. Can you do that? But I was listening to Chief Runyon, 50%, that was in the workshop, 50% of what they're going to do with this new position that we just voted for, is going to be dealing with these folks that are in active addiction. That's the other thing about this device, you have to be in active addiction. But you can be actively taking Suboxone or Methadone and that device. So they claim, we're going to find out, like you said, probably within the next couple of months. I don't know how that process works, but I do know that they did say that in the next 30 days, the FDA is going to have that documentation. Now, how long that takes for that to come out and where we can find out, I don't know. But I know that Chris will already have people that could go right into this thing. So if we're going to do it, I, I, I wouldn't want to wait. And, and of course, we'd have to call them on this, because I would like to see the money go into an escrow account until they can get counties on board. And that's, I'm pretty sure that's how they explained it six or eight months ago when they were on a Zoom call with us. Pretty sure that's how they explained it, when they were looking for the state grant as well.
I'd be happy to call and, and ask them for the specifics of, of that, you know, what, what their operations would do.
I mean, personally, I'd like to go for that whole amount of 66,000, but if they're, we'd have to ask them. But my motion would be that we would half that and go with the 33,000. That would be my motion.
That would be like, what, would they promise this?
34, so that'd be 17, right.
Rick, I'd like to just clarify what you're saying. I'm not sure I understand, but you're saying you'd make a motion to give them that money, assuming that we're just making a commitment that if they get the other counties on board, then we would do it?
Well, we need.
If you don't get the other counties, then you don't do it.
Well, that's the way I understood their first proposal.
Okay, but that's what you're saying?
That was when, when they were trying to get the state grant.
Exactly, yep. And well, and they said in the workshop, that you're correct, they said that they, they expect to spend, it's a cost of about 10,000 per participant. And that, that, I wrote it down here somewhere.
So is your motion, though, a commitment to give them the money, assuming they get the other counties, or just to give them the money?
I'm not sure how that needs to look, I'd have, or how that needs to sound, I'd have to go to Cam for that.
That makes a difference to me, because I think I'd almost be more in favor, if they, if they have the commitments from the counties and they can do the project, then okay. But then if they don't, then I don't know if we're just giving them money to go towards their organization, which is okay, but it's not the study.
No, and, and right, and that's not what, how I want to do it. I want, I think, I think I'm, we're on the same page.
We also wanted money for the next two years. Talk about that. Yeah, they wanted 66,000 commitment first year, 11, 11.
22, yeah, well, 22.
22, 22, I'm sorry. And that was 34 total participants that they wanted to.
But if we, if we cut all that in half, if they'll accept that, again, it would, and maybe we need to wait, have a conversation with them. I wouldn't be opposed to that. I could withdraw my motion, but.
Well, if you, if, if you want to withdraw your motion, we, you know, I'm going to be out of pocket till Wednesday of next, through Wednesday of next week, but we could gather that information, share that information.
Ask them about, and this is my term, I don't know if it's correct, an escrow account type thing.
Yeah. I, I think what they were sharing was their hope was to get 500 participants in this program from all these counties. What you're saying is, we would put in, we approve money to go into an escrow, that once they reach that threshold, then they'd start spending the money.
Or we could just commit to it and fund it once they come back and tell us, hey, here's our commitments. And we just have the money ourselves.
Yeah. So.
But we got to give them some kind of a commitment so they can check off a box and say, hey, Scott County is on board, when they're talking to other counties, just like.
Right.
But I, I think it'd be prudent and you, you have, you know, you have a motion, if you're, I don't know.
I withdraw it.
Yeah. I'll gather the additional information and share and then we'll make a, you know, then we'll make some more discussion.
Can you also find out when their IRV, their DOP line study data will be released?
I think it'll be August 9th. That's the note that I took.
I didn't hear that.
I'll confirm.
Yeah, I did, I, I listened.
I would like to wait to ask that instead of just.
Would you be willing, Rick, just to, to wait till August 9th and, and gather all that and have it all?
Well, like, still, like, we can still have a conversation and even bring that up to them.
Yeah, absolutely. So with that said then, yes, sir.
Is there anything else that this committee has talked about?
Not, not, not that I have at all.
Okay, so the only, the.
The other thing that we talked about, and, and from the information I had, remember when we were talking about possibly making a state grant application to build transition housing?
Yeah, that's been a while, yeah.
But, but they, they had so many applications that they, that they said they were going to have a, the, the information that I, I was told that they, they had a moratorium on accepting applications. Then I was told, no, they're, they're still taking them, but they've got like 500. And, you know, that's something that we could talk about later, but that would, that would have to have a state grant application in my mind. So out of, now, we could supplement it out of this money, you know, like, but it would be a state grant application for that.
I'm just trying to weigh them all.
No, but there's nothing else that, that's come up in, to my knowledge. So we'll come back, I'll gather data and we'll come back. Strand project agreement as shared for the Legacy Trail Extension design for Strand to complete. I am so confident in Strand and, you know, they've done, you know, all the work on the existing Legacy Trail. And I shared this information with you all. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this? 192, but that's, you know, it's all covered out of that, or part of the grant. I'm looking for the exact number right here.
I said 19412.
Is it 19412? Yeah. And that, the way this works is, this goes to KYTC. They review the scope of work and, and check the box, saying, yes, this is appropriate. Then we have to approve it, then send it back to KYTC, then Strand gets a notice to proceed. Would there be?
It's all green money, right?
Yes, yes. Now, we're committed to our match and, but that's down the road. Would there be a motion to accept? Motion from Kelly. Second from who? Chad Wallace? Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Ordinance 2308, first reading wrecker service. You have a summary, I believe.
I do, that's the good news. Although it's still a page and a half. Scott County Fiscal Court, ordinance 2308. An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance 1303 and establishing updated rotating schedules, policy guidelines, rates and fees for wrecker services utilized by Scott County, Kentucky. Summary, one, repeals and replaces ordinance number 1303. Two, establishes rotating schedules for wrecker services, which will be maintained by the Scott County Sheriff's Office. Three, gives the sheriff the authority to add or delete wrecker services and the right to remove any wrecker service from the rotating schedule for infractions of the ordinance. Four, requires the sheriff's office to review wrecker service rates annually. Five, allows vehicle owners to choose their own wrecker service, unless the vehicle is impeding traffic, in which case the applicable first responder agency shall select the first wrecker service available. Six, outlines rotating schedule procedures for calls to wrecker services. Seven, requires wrecker services to answer the phone and respond to all types of wrecks when called as a condition of participating in the rotating schedule. Eight, requires wreckers to arrive on scene within 30 minutes and heavy wreckers within one hour, considering reasonable conditions. Nine, gives first responders the authority to pursue heavy wrecker services from outside of the rotating schedule if necessary in the event of special circumstances such as severe weather events. Ten, requires participating wrecker services to maintain necessary equipment and clean and remove debris from the roadway. Eleven, requires participating wrecker services not to remove vehicles until directed to do so, and to only collect one vehicle unless special circumstances exist. Twelve, requires participating wrecker services to maintain a business license, comply with all commercial driver's license laws, possess liability insurance, be responsible for vehicles stored at their facilities and consent to inspection of their facilities. Thirteen, establishes an updated maximum rate schedule, addresses storage fees and mileage fees for wrecks which occur outside the city limits of the city of Georgetown, and addresses special circumstances and heavy wrecker fees. Fourteen, establishes that the operator of the wrecker service shall be responsible for collecting all fees for services rendered, and that it is not the responsibility of the Scott County Sheriff's Office, the Scott County Fiscal Court, or any entity thereof to collect fees for wrecker services rendered towing vehicles owed by third parties. Any attempts by a wrecker service to collect wrecker service fees owed by vehicle owners from the sheriff's office constitute a violation of the ordinance and service grounds for removal from the rotating schedule. Fifteen, states the defending section of the ordinance is held invalid, such holding shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions thereof. And sixteen, takes effect immediately upon passage and publication. And sixteen, takes effect immediately upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination at the Scott, at the office of the Scott County Fiscal Court, Clerk, 101 East Main Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, introduced and publicly read for the first time July 14, 2023.
Questions or comments?
Real quick, and Jeremy can answer this, he needs to. So if a, a car is, is in, and is going to be required to be in evidence, and the wrecker takes it to our lot to, to be kept for evidence, the bill will go to the owner of the car, correct?
Correct.
But we don't charge a, a fee to keep it on our, our, our.
In our, in evidence, correct. We're not, like I said, we're just not in the business of trying to make money off of it.
Yeah, thank you. And I say that, Judge, because there's been tw- three times this week I've had to deal with these wrecker issues. There was two stories about cars that would be putting in, put into a lot used for evidence, and people were still paying car payments, insurance on these vehicles, and, and it's, it becomes the issue, and I'm glad we don't, as a county, charge a daily fee to put them in our evidence lot, to, that's just another cost to.
Yeah, I think, I know one of the stories you're speaking of, but typically when they're involved in a crash, like I was, our, I'll let, I'll let the insurance companies come to our lot, they'll go ahead and total them out so they can pay it off the car or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm glad that we're not in, putting people, who's in a bad spot already in it.
No, we, we don't need to pour anything else on their. Yeah, I mean, most likely they lost a loved one or something, and we're not gonna, it's just, you know, pouring gas on fire, right?
Thank you.
Question on the mileage fees. So, so if, say somebody lives 10 miles outside of city limits, does it just cost them one way for the mileage, or does it cost them both ways?
One way. We, we, it's called a tow mile.
Connect to when they get back to the city.
Correct, so if you live 10 mi, let's say the vehicle's picked up at the 136, let's just say the 126 is county line, they're only getting the tow miles from the 136, once it's loaded, till they get back into city limits, then the tow miles are normal.
So what if it's, happens right here downtown, they have to tow it to stamping ground?
Well, if you pay, that's on you, that, that's a little bit different. If you want your vehicle towed somewheres, you can work something out with the tow company right then and there. This is if it's going to their lot because it's inoperable.
Okay.
So does that make sense? Like I said, if you break down, and, or you have a wreck that you want to tow to your house and not their lot, that's on, if you two want to work out something, that's fine.
Okay, yeah, that makes more sense.
Question? Would there be a motion?
Motion.
Motion from Mr. Jones. Second from Mr. Pratt. Any other questions or comments?
Well, one quick one, I know Mike had a lot of interaction when I watched the workshop, is you, you think all things are covered from your, from.
Yeah, I'm good with all of the language.
Y'all, they've had an opportunity to review it and give me some feedback, which has been incorporated into there.
And Cam-
And you can continue to do so if there's anything else that, that comes up.
And Cam took your all's edits from last week and incorporated that, so. So we appreciate your all's efforts every day. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Fifteen, all points agreement renewal. I spoke with a representative from their company, I was anticipating getting an amended contract agreement with details about an annual monthly monetary lease value, essentially. I did not receive that by email. I, I'm gonna table this until I get that information. Any questions about that? Number 16, commerce licensing agreement, MOU. You all have had this, you've reviewed it, I've talked about it. I think it's a very positive thing, and the number one thing we need to do for our community is to try to attract more jobs, and, and that's what pays for these services that we have, and, and more jobs, good paying jobs, you know, help give us the revenue to do so. I think this is branding, marketing, attracting talent, and this agreement would, would do that.
How long is the, I read through it, but I don't remember, how long is this?
Well, this, they're asking for, this is the first year of the agreement, and it'd be 25,000 out of this year's agreement, and, and that's what this MOU would do.
Just for one, is it?
Yes, well, I, you know, Rick, that's a really good question.
I'm not sure that I saw it, I keep thinking about it.
You know, they'll have to continue to pay for these services, but this is just this initial push.
Well, it'll be, it'd be, then if it's just for one year, it sounds like.
It's just for one year, and.
Then we'll, we'll have data.
Yeah.
Because I, I know that, I think they talked about, they'll give them a report for return on investment, ROI, so.
And we'll have Andy Johnson back here, you know, late next spring to talk about it.
So really, it's a one-year commitment, and then we'll make a choice from there.
In the city of Georgetown, it's doing 25,000, and then, and then Scott United's doing 10.
10, yeah, solid.
So what, kind of like the net recovery thing, if we do 25, let's say Scott United doesn't do 10, or the city doesn't do 25, does it go forward?
Well, Ryan, it's my understanding, they, they have not had a vote, but Scott United will do it, period. And it's my understanding, Mayor Jenkins supports this, it's, it's in the budget, it's just, they're doing the same thing we're doing. Would there be a motion to approve this as presented? Chad Wallace, Kelly Corman with a second. Any other questions or comments? Thank you all, all those in favor. Any opposed, motion passes. Next, I'll allow Cam to read the Resolution 2318, Kentucky Jobs Retention Act Program for TMMK. Will you read that, and then we'll make comments?
Sure. All right, Scott County Fiscal Court, Resolution Number 2318. A resolution approving the granting of local inducements to Toyota Motor Manufacturing Kentucky Incorporated pursuant to KRS Chapter 154, Subchapter 25. Whereas the Scott County Fiscal Court finds that it is a legitimate public purpose of the said court to undertake activities for the creation of, addition to, or the retention of jobs for residents of this community in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. And whereas the Kentucky General Assembly has enacted KRS 154 dot 25 dash 10 to KRS 154 dot 25 dash 50, establishing the Kentucky Jobs Retention Act, or KJRA, for eligible companies to reinvest in their facilities for the creation and retention of a significant number of jobs. And whereas this program provides state incentives to eligible businesses which remain in the Commonwealth, thus creating and preserving jobs for Kentuckians. And whereas the program encourages local governmental authorities to participate in these inducements for businesses within this jurisdiction. And whereas the Scott County Fiscal Court finds that offering the local inducements authorized by the KJRA for the purpose of creating and/or retaining jobs is in the furtherance of the public purposes, said court, will benefit Scott County by preserving sources of tax revenue for the public services provided to the citizens of Scott County. And whereas Toyota Motor Manufacturing Kentucky Incorporated, or Toyota, applied for the benefits authorized by the KJRA for its manufacturing plant located at 1001 Cherry Blossom Way, Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky. And whereas the Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority, or Authority, approved a third amended and restated jobs retention agreement, or agreement, dated May 31, 2023, the effective date, made between the Authority and Toyota. And whereas Toyota proposes to further supplement its project pursuant to KRS 154 point 25 dash oh five zero through the acquisition, construction, rehabilitation, and the installment of additional improvements to the company's location in Scott County, Kentucky. Now therefore be it resolved by the Scott County, Kentucky Fiscal Court as follows. Section one, that the Scott County Fiscal Court does hereby approve the granting of inducements to Toyota for a project as approved by the Authority on May 31, 2023 pursuant to KRS 154 point 25 dash 010 to KRS 154 point 25 dash 050. As part of the project and beginning in 2025, Toyota will assemble the first U.S. assembled all-new three-row SUV battery electric vehicle, or BEV. Toyota will also assemble battery components provided by the Toyota North Carolina Battery Plant. This new 50, 591.5 million dollar investment will build upon Toyota's previous projects and allow Toyota to increase its job target commitment to 8,950 full-time Kentucky resident team members. Section two, that the state-to-local participation ratio in this grant of inducements will be 80% state, 10% Scott County Fiscal Court, and 10% City of Georgetown. The Scott County Fiscal Court agrees to forego the collection of one-half of the 1% of the occupational license, which would otherwise be due, which shall be retained by Toyota Motor Manufacturing Kentucky Incorporated for inducements under the Kentucky Jobs Retention Act for a new term beginning May 31, 2023, and ending no later than 10 years from the effective date. Section three, that the Scott County Judge Executive is hereby authorized and directed to execute acknowledged and deliver on behalf of the Scott County Fiscal Court any and all papers, instruments, certificates, affidavits, and other documents, and to do and/or cause to be done any and all acts and things necessary or proper for the granting of the inducements authorized by the act and this resolution. Section four, this resolution and the approval contained herein shall only impact the eligible company's occupational wages and shall not affect the occupational license fee of the Scott County schools or the net profits tax imposed by any local taxing authority, including the Scott County Fiscal Court. Section five, this resolution shall be effective upon its passage and approval, this resolution, if you choose to do so, approved this 14th day of July, 2023.
You know, as I mentioned earlier, you know, good jobs in our community help fund our services, and this commitment from Toyota assures, you know, well into the future their presence in our community, and I support this resolution. I think it's very important, and, you know, it's just a, it, it amends the previous, incorporates those previous agreements, and you have a new 10-year term starting May, May 23, I believe.
May 31st.
Was it May 31st? And, and that's, you know, that extends that out for another 10-year term. What questions or comments was anybody have?
A couple of things, unfortunately, I never was able to work a timeout to meet with Mr. Cooper and Mr. Minky. We just never could get our schedules together. I did have a couple of questions, I don't know if anybody here can answer. I'm, I remember conversations from a year or two ago that I thought their, their focus was the hybrids, you know, battery and, and gas. I just wonder what changed that, maybe, maybe I'm remembering wrong. And, and I was wondering with that in mind, are they getting any kind of inducements, or whatever you want to call it, from the federal government? I know this is a partnership between Georgetown, Scott County, and the state. I was just wondering, because my memory was that they were big into the hybrid, and this is a huge change, I'm not, I just wondered what brought that on, and.
You know, they spend a lot of money on market analysis.
I know something came out just recently that they, they've come up with a.
A solid-state battery, and I've not heard details other than.
I haven't either, but it's supposed to be a huge advantage.
It's supposed to cut the charging time, reduce that charging time significantly, and the range is supposed to be much more significant.
Yeah.
So.
The other part of that is the federal government released by a meeting for charging stations to be built across the United States, and so that might be one of the reasons why they're moving.
I'm just, it's not, I'm not opposed to this, but.
They have, they were given any federal dollars, I can check and will check, but I don't recall any specific mention in those meetings. But they spent a lot of money on market projections and, and analysis, and, you know, that's where they're at. You know, I don't know if you all read, but Susan Elkington, who was TMMK president, has now moved into a new role that's created, it's really, she was, she will be over all BEVs nationwide, and then Mr. Kelly Creach, I believe, is the new president. So, you know, they're, they're going full steam ahead, and, and, Rick, I, I think they will have continued hybrids, but I also think that some of their other, uh, market initiatives will be involving hydrogen fuel cells.
Well, I've heard, I've heard all of that, but I, I've also been told, but I don't know how they know, so, but that they're not gonna be going down that hybrid path anymore.
Yeah, I, I can't answer.
I don't, I'm, I can't either.
Yeah.
I'll comment.
Yes, sir.
Just, I really support this, and, you know, we're always looking at ways to get new businesses here, which is good, but we really need to look at how to try incentivize the people at our year and make long-term commitments, especially for such a big employer. So I'd make a motion.
All right, second.
I concur with his comments, once I crunch the numbers, it made sense to me, so, yeah, I'll second that.
All right.
Yeah, I'm all for that, some of the numbers they gave us showing that they're gonna have almost 9,000 employees, 8,950 is what they're projecting after this expansion.
Yeah.
And they're at 8,250 right now, so it's 700 more employees, so I'm all for it.
So we have a motion second, any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Next, we had a bid put out for Toyota Tundra pickup truck. One bid returned from Greens Toyota, that was in the amount of 64,717. We talked about possibly leasing this vehicle, the sentiment was, let's just purchase it, and to do this, we had to put out a bid. Questions or comments?
Is this, is this budget, like, I don't know.
Yeah, the, there was money budgeted, we'll have to transfer just a little bit to cover the total, but, yes. There was money in last year's budget, and we didn't use it, so.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second, any other question or comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Thank you all. We've already done the sheriff's, sheriff's office. I'd like to request that you all approve putting out a bid advertisement for, for a new clock controller, and then also for replacement hands and faces. We've talked about, the, the north side of the clock has not worked for some time. After talking with a vendor, you know, one of the big expenses, everything, every time something happens with a hand on the clock, we have to rent a $7,000 crane because of the height. Don't want to do that anymore, so this bid would incorporate the new clock faces that the, the clock hands would pull in on a cylinder from the inside, and we wouldn't have to rent lifts anymore. And I'd just like you all to let me put a bid out.
Motion.
Motion and second from Mr. Jones.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Off of my note, didn't we approve this on June 9?
I don't think so, Ryan.
I remember talking about it.
We talked about it, but.
I had that we put out a, that we approved the resolution, put out a bid.
We talked about it, but.
It was double approved, I guess.
We can double approve. We have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we'll get that out. I'd like to ask you to approve allocating 14,700 towards putting in a sidewalk and a pad in front of the, the storage building that we built, you know, the hope was that we wouldn't have to do it, but I should have known better, but it's just as much traffic that goes back and forth to that, we've got to have a sidewalk. We've got a price from Hubbard, Ronnie Lee Hubbard, B H, BRH Contracting, it's 14,700. I think Chad was out there the other day, you want to comment on that?
No, it's needed.
All right.
Motion.
So, so motion, second, who's the second from?
I'll say. Do you have an estimate, or we need to do an add?
Uh, it's just 14,700.
Yeah.
We've got an estimate, and.
Okay, Chad and.
Rob. All those in favor? Any opposed, motion passes. And then, new business, I don't have any new business, anyone else have any new business? Any of our guests or audience members? With that said, then, we'll move down to executive session, KRS 61810C, for possible litigation.
It's a potential pending, right?
Right.
Correct.
Would there be a, a motion to go into executive session? So we have a motion from Mr. Wallace, a second from Mr. Hostetler, all those in favor? Any opposed, we'll go in. We'll go into closed session.
I think there's a motion to come out of executive session.
No action taken.
I think everybody's in the room. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Motion.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're out of executive session. Let the record reflect that no action was taken. And is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
Motion from Kelly, second from Rob Jones. All those in favor. We are adjourned.